Good afternoon. I'd like to call to order this meeting of the mayor and council of the city of La Grange. We will begin with an invocation to be offered by Pastor Fred Stanley, to be followed by the pledge of allegiance. Please stand.
Let us pray.
Eternal God, our Father, we thank you and we bless you for this day. Thank you for life, health, and strength. We thank you for your Spirit, which leads us and guides us every day to be the people that you would want us to be. Guide us in this meeting today with your wisdom, with your guidance, oh Lord, that we'll be able to make decisions and celebrate each other in this great city of La Grange. We pray this blessing in all others in Jesus's name. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor Stanley. Appreciate you stepping in like that for us. Council members have all been given copy of the minutes of the regular council meeting held on March 8th. I would entertain a motion.
Motion approved.
I have a motion, a second to approve. Is there any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay, moving to public hearings, we are here tonight to receive comments on a request to rezone property located at 304 Broad Street from TNMX to DTMX. Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, City Council. This public hearing has been properly advertised. At this time, we would take any public comment.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to speak on this rezoning request? Seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and I will move to a public hearing to receive comments on a request to rezone property located in the 800 block of New Franklin Road from TNR and SDMH to CRMX. Ms. Kelsey?
Yes, sir. Again, Mr. Mayor, this public hearing has been properly advertised, and we would take any comments at this time.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to be heard on this rezoning request? Seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and I will move to the final public hearing to receive comments on a request to annex and zone property located at 1350 Lafayette Parkway from Troop County GC to CRMX.
Again, Mr. Mayor, this public hearing has been properly advertised, and we would take any comments at this time.
Is there anybody in council chambers who would like to be heard on this rezoning and annexation request? Seeing none, I will declare that public hearing closed, and we will move to delegations. We are delighted to welcome tonight... Did you say something that happened? Oh, we are delighted tonight to welcome Tabitha Coverson from Communities and Schools.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Glad to be back again. I'll make this as quick and as brief as possible. Not sure how that works. First, I want to say, as always, thank you to the city of La Grange and all for your continued support of communities and schools and what we do here in Troop County. I want to start off with, what I'm passing out is our outcomes for the past, this last school year. As you can see, you know, we're still making gains, improvements in graduation rates and academics and stay in school rate. On here, it'll show you that 92% of our seniors graduated, and then we had some seniors go to summer school, so we actually have a 100% graduation rate for those students served by CIS. One new component that we have, and I just did this presentation for the school board, so I'm still a little winded from that. That was, it was a lot, so it'll be, you know, a lot tonight. One of the new components we had was reengagement. We received funding from CIS National to hire a reengagement coordinator, and what that person did, and Mr. Hussey, I'm gonna call him Trenton, we all call him Quay, so if I say Quay, you know who I'm talking about. And this is my team back here, and I'll introduce them in a second. But what he does is go out and find those students that were not engaged, not coming to school, not online. He contacted over 300 kids. He did actually get 11 kids to get reengaged and come back into the school setting to finish their high school career or a GED program. And that might not sound like a lot, but that's 11 more kids that are gonna graduate and contribute to society. And of those 317, not all of them were not in school. They just, some of them chose other options, like a GED program or some online, some of those online courses that are offered. For whatever reason, OCIS National decided that reengagement coordination, it looked better on paper than it did as far as the results, so they aren't gonna fund it again. However, we received funding for expansion, so Mr. Hussey will stay with us. He'll just be a site coordinator in one of our, one of our schools. So we won't lose him. We'll just lose that position. I know I came and I spoke to you all about the Dads on Duty Moms on a Mission program, and we did kick that off. We did it at a couple of schools. We had people come out from the community in 30-degree weather to greet our students, give them positive affirmations during the morning hours. Now that COVID is somewhat, I'm not gonna say gone, but it's a little better, and some of the protocols have been relaxed, we're gonna increase that. We did have a group to go into Callaway Middle School and do some mentoring and have lunch with some students. So we'll be continuing that through the rest of this year and really hit it hard next year because the kids were very receptive. We had one student to walk up to one of our volunteers and say that I feel loved just by seeing us and people from the community out there, speaking and taking the time to greet them and talk to them and give them encouragement. Another, we were continuing to do Reality U, which is our financial literacy program. We just did one at Callaway High School, and so if anybody's available, on April 7th, we'll be doing it again at Long Cane Middle School. Starts around 8:00, you'll be done by 11:30. And we always send an email to Katie, so she'll let you know when that happens and what's needed. We have been very fortunate to make some new partnerships this year. One of the biggest was we received, we applied for a grant for expansion to the Callaway Foundation, and they've been funding us roughly about $50,000 a year. This year, we asked for $400,000, and we were awarded that amount, so we can expand into two new schools. So we'll be going full-time into Berta Weathersby and Gardiner in the middle school. And so we will probably serve at least about 1,300 additional students on top of the over 3,000 that we're already serving. We also received a boost grant, and it's for summer and after-school programming. So we'll start doing that. Our summer program, we normally serve about 50 to 60 kids, so this year, we're gonna do a lot more students, and we added three more days to summer camp, and I know I'm getting daggers in my back from my staff, but that's what we do. So our summer program, Summer Enrichment Program, we focus on reading, public speaking, we take them on field trips, field trips, places they wouldn't normally be exposed to. Last summer, we took them to, you know, World of Coke and the Legacy Museum in Montgomery. They actually went to iFly, so we had kids doing, you know, simulated skydiving. My staff did it too. I didn't, I was the photographer. Even though it wasn't a real plane, I wasn't getting in that too, getting sucked up in the air. If we go back, I may try it this time. But the purpose is just to get our students exposed to things. This year, we have a partnership with Camp Southern Ground in Fayetteville. We have 25 slots. This is a summer camp that normally costs $2,000 for the week, so we get to send 25 of our kids to this camp to be exposed and interact with other students from all over Georgia and probably other places. Some of them are celebrities' students, so it'll be a nice change for them. Finally, on the other side of that, we're still serving our kids who are homeless. I've had to factor into my budget some funding to help with emergency housing. It's to the point where my finance department called and asked, "Where have I been traveling to?" Because I keep sending in these requests for repayment for hotels, but it's for our families that are living in hotels. We partner with Wellstar, and they've been donating detergent, because a lot of our kids don't come to school because they don't have clean clothes. So we've been able to assist our families with just something simple that I take for granted, because I just washed seven loads of clothes and forgot about one and had to wash it over again. Some families don't have that luxury, and so we are able to help them to wash those clothes so the kids can come to school. We've been fortunate to be working with Hope Givers, so we're exposing the community and people to the need for more mental health services, so we've been reaching out. And I've been working with Tamlin Hall to put that on the forefront for the community that our kids really need mental health services. Let's see, we partnered with Juvenile Court. They've had some kids that were like, "We don't know what else to do." And so I get a call, and so we went for a particular student. It was our day off, there was no school, but we all got dressed up and went to Juvenile Court for one student, a team of people. And this young man hadn't been to school in two years. His mom would enroll him, and, you know, 10 days would go by and they would unenroll or whatever it is. And Mr. Hussey, once again, is assigned to this student, and the young man got in front of Judge Key, arms in his shirt, pants, you know, sagging, and, you know, Mr. Hussey pulled him to the side and told him to, you know, make himself more presentable, and he did. It's been a struggle, but he has been coming to school, so he's missed some days and he's had some, you know, some hiccups. But for a student who hasn't been in school, who absolutely hates school, would, you know, go to the bus stop and go a whole different direction, he's been coming to school. So that's, you know, that's what we're here for, to help those parents and help those kids. And the other story we have, and I forgot to, a young lady, I got a phone call from one of our schools, and a young lady was saying, "If I gotta, I have to go to court. If I don't have any money, I'm going to jail." She started off the beginning of the years of junior, she was behind. She started making up her classes. She has one class, and she's on the edge, but we think we'll get her over the edge to pass that class. And I was like, "Well, I could pay her fine, but what does, what does that say?" You know, that would be simple. I was like, "What do I get in return? What guarantees can you give me?" And I said, "Never mind." Because of a partnership we have here, I made some phone calls. She was able to go to court and not have to pay that money. She held it over, so this young lady could get the mental health services that she needed. That took place. She's on track. She will graduate this May. Again, that's what we do for our students. And she was also featured on our Facebook page and Instagram. She did one of our Black History Moments. So not only are we trying to help them to stay in school, but we want to elevate them to leadership positions where they're, you know, in the community, and people can see them, and they know that, you know, they're surrounded by, like our mission says, surrounded by a community of support. And then last but not least, because if it weren't for the people behind me, I wouldn't be standing here talking to you, none of these numbers would be possible. So you've already heard about Mr. Hussey. He's our, no, he's not our brand-new one. And then, of course, you've met Mr. Stanley somehow. He ended up on the agenda during the invocation. He's our long, long-running site coordinator at Long Cane Middle School, 22 years. Mr. Griffin is at Callaway Middle School. He's on year three. I'm gonna skip over Stephanie Williams is at Callaway High School. She's year five. And then we have Ms. Nikki Tigner. She just started la, Wednesday, last Wednesday, so she hadn't even made it a week yet, but she was an employee of the Troop County School System and at Berta, so she will transition from a parent pro to a site coordinator at Berta Weathersby. So this is my current team. I also have an AmeriCorps member that's working on reading at both Berta and Franklin Forest Elementary, and I think Callaway and Clearview, so they do some online activities, online reading, online book club for kids to keep them reading books. We partnered with Barnes &amp; Noble. We donated about 175 books to get through reading for our kids of all ages. So that's one of the things that we also focus on, is making sure our kids are reading, not just up until third grade, but just reading and trying to have a love for books and reading. I think I make, did I get it all this time? Oh, one last thing, our POPS Club, I mentioned that before, is our kids that are affected by the, either juvenile justice system or parents incarcerated or have been incarcerated. So they meet, it's a club for those kids, and they, you know, write their feelings and thoughts. And last year, we had six kids published in an anthology. This year, we have 15 students that are published. So the new anthology just came out. It's called, it's called, The New Anthology?
Dear Friends.
Okay, Dear Friends, and it's available on Amazon, and 15 of our students are published in that book. That's the end of it. Any questions?
Thank you, Tabitha. Thank you for always coming and giving us a very thorough and encouraging report about your work, and more importantly, thank you and your staff for all that you're doing on a daily basis to help the children in our community. We know it makes a difference. The numbers, the numbers demonstrate that, the stories you always share demonstrate that, and we know it's the case, and appreciate all of y'all's hard work. Any questions or comments from the council?
I have two things. First, I want to say, Ms. Coverson, I'm one of your biggest fans of Communities and Schools. I'm always blown away when you give your report, and I see the numbers, that success numbers. But I have a question. I see every dollar invested in CIS creates $11.60 of economic benefit for the community. Now, how did y'all come up with that?
Don't ask me why. So it's basically, once, after, I think it's how many years and their earnings, once they graduate and start earning money and...
Paying taxes.
Paying taxes.
Putting it back into the economy.
Yeah, so every dollar.
That's mind-blowing to me. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
I'd just like to say that I did see one of your videos on Facebook where y'all were at one of the high schools doing the meet and greet in the morning, so it's kind of refreshing to see what you were, as soon as I saw the video, I knew what it was, because you talked about it, so I just wanted you to know.
Connecting those dots.
Yep.
Good deal.
Doc, you got anything? Thank you for what you do. I'd like to thank you and your whole staff. I think you guys do an amazing job. Year after year, you guys answer the bell when nobody else will, and you guys blow me away. I am so proud of each and every one of you.
Thank you.
But since I got this position, for four years, I've been asking this question, I gotta ask it again. Is anybody here in the chamber from the Troop County Board of Education?
Sounds like you were just with them, though, right?
I was, and I never, I never tell them that I'm coming here, because we're, I mean, we're in, even though we're in the schools, we're independent, you know, agency, so they don't know I'm here until after I'm here.
But for four years that I've been here, the Troop County School has been receiving failing grades. Period. They have not improved. Your numbers have improved, but your numbers are hinged and based upon their failures.
Did they ask you at the meeting if he was at their meeting?
I ain't going. I'm gonna tell you now, I'm not trying to vote, because I need to throw some bricks. I'm just gonna be real with you. I've got children out here, 12-years-old, getting shot, okay? We're at, we're at point critical now.
That's true.
Okay, and, and, I gotta get on my soapbox here for a minute. What you do, like I said, is hinged upon the failures of the school system. So your numbers are going up, you're improving, you're, you've got more children to engage with. You know, I know you engage with over three, what, there were over 300 that you had to engage with? Was that the total number or just what you could get to?
That's, it's actually, last year was 3,000, this year it'll go up to over 4,000 kids. They case manage, they have each of them carry a caseload of about 100 kids, so we'll case manage over 500 kids.
And I, I mean, it's just unbelievable. I know you guys are understaffed, underfunded, and I just want to make sure that the school system is doing their fair share to support you.
They are, but we really need the community.
And then let me know, and I will bang the drum, and I will get out there and I will drag them out. Because I don't mind calling out people. I don't mind at all. But like I said, you know, I've got, I've got too many, too much violence in my community for them not to be engaged, for the school system not to come out of the schools and engage with the community, because I really feel like there's a disconnect. I've got, like, very few community schools. My grandchildren go to Berta Weathersby, okay? But I don't see Berta Weathersby coming outside. As soon as, as soon as, as soon as the bell rings, teacher's gone, staff's gone, there's no engagement with the community, et cetera, et cetera. And, and so, you know, I'm a grandparent, you know? I want to know what's going on in the community, I mean, in this school, you know? Invite me! You know, I haven't seen a grandpa, a don, grandpa for donuts at Berta yet. I mean, I don't see that kind of stuff.
And I'm a part of and have been somehow pushed to facilitator of our educational task force, and that's one of the things that I'm asking for, that we stop just talking, you know, on Zoom, but start engaging the community, going out, having these conversations to get the feedback from, you know, the people we're serving. What, what are your needs? I can tell you what, what I, what you need, but from my point of view, I have to see it from a different lens, so we are definitely gonna work on that, and the school system's heavily involved in that as well. So it's a slow process, but some changes are in the works.
And again, I thank you and your staff for what you do. You guys are amazing. Thank you.
And we're also delighted tonight to welcome Holly Winner from the American Red Cross.
Hi, good evening this evening. Thank you so much for allowing me to come and give a Red Cross update to you this evening. As Mayor said, my name's Holly Winner. I'm the Executive Director for the Central Midwest Georgia Chapter, which is 21 counties in Central Midwest Georgia.
We may have to let Sue drive the...
Okay, next slide. Our mission is to prevent and alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies by mobilizing the power of the volunteer and the generosity of the donor. We have a wonderful group of nine board members led by Bacell Frannell. This is her second year as chair. She's a local real estate agent. She's a longtime-serving board member and really passionate about our mission. You'll see right here, these are mission delivery numbers at this midpoint. These were, go back to December 31st for this current FY year. You'll see 12 and 17. 12 is the number of disasters that we have responded to. This includes home fires, but is not limited to any kind of natural disaster that would affect a household. And then 17 families. I'm really pleased with 12 and 17, because total fiscal year of 21, we responded to 50 disasters in Troop County and responded to 91 families. We had a lot of multifamily fires, which increases the number of families served. So 12 and 17 is really good for where we were at the end of December. And then the 171 adults and youths better prepared, that took place at Franklin Forest back in December before the holidays. We were able to do Pillowcase Project for the elementary schools, and that's really great that we were able to do that before the holidays, because holidays is a time where families are more susceptible to home fires, extra cooking, decorations, overloading the power circuits, cold weather, which can lead to portable heaters being used. So that's where we were able to educate the 171 elementary students on fire safety going into the holiday season. And then 90% of Red Cross mission is carried out by our volunteer workforce, and so we have a really wonderful group of 24 individuals in the community that are helping carry out, responding to home fires, working at blood, as blood donor ambassadors at our blood drives, just doing all kinds of mission delivery in our community. So those 24, the pictures, there's a picture of a multifamily fire that we responded to, and then one of our, one of our wonderful volunteers. Okay, next slide. And then Blood Drive Partners, the city, thank you so much for your continued involvement in blood drives. The fire department has actually become my home blood drive that I have been giving at. And then the county, our educational partners are really wonderful, the banks, and then so many faith-based partners for our blood drives. We're a very active blood drive community, and that is really essential to the health of our blood supply. Red Cross supplies 40% in the country, so playing our part here in our community is very critical, and we're very thankful. Next slide. And then, we have long been the suppliers for, for special-type blood, and we've been working in the sickle cell patient space. But now, we are making efforts to triple the number of black blood donors by the end of 2024. The United States has, our sickle cell disease is the largest genetic disease in the United States with over 100,000 patients. We have the largest population in Georgia, which is over 10,300. We know that we have families that are suffering from this disease here in our community. Cara Jennings is an example. We connected with her, and she shared her story last month when we celebrated Black History Month with the Sickle Cell Virtual Forum here in our community. It was put on by our Diversity and Inclusion Committee. Cara shared her story on how sometimes she has to wait for blood because there's not enough. COVID has made the blood shortage ve, unique. We've lost about 10% of our donor base throughout COVID, and so when you have a disease that requires specialty blood, it's made it even harder to get the proper care. So it's been great the last, we've had two virtual forums and two sickle cell fighter blood drives, and to see the growth that's happened in the last year has been really wonderful, and we are really leading the way in the state of Georgia for what we're able to do here in the La Grange community with sickle cell. So I'm really, really proud of that. And then, next slide. Thank you so much. This is Red Cross Month, and we're celebrating 141 years as an organization. We got our start on the battlefield of the Civil War with Clara Barton, and so I'm just thankful for your support, just being a part of us as we bring support and shoulders to cry on as we prevent and alleviate human suffering. So any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Thank you, Holly. Thank you for your update and for your presentation, and we certainly appreciate all the work that you and your volunteers do in the community. And like you say, you've had, you had less to do, and that's a good thing with the fires and the, and the natural disasters, so.
Yeah.
But we're glad you're there when, when those things do happen and families are affected.
Thank you, Mayor. We're thrilled and honored to be able to be there.
Any questions or comments for Holly?
Again, you guys do a fantastic job. Appreciate you always there to answer the bell when the fire and people, when a fire happens and people are displaced. You were talking about engagement with the African-American community, and might I share this with you? Just because, again, I'm on my soapbox, violence in my community, and a lot of these victims that, of the violence are African-American men. You do CPR training, don't you?
Yes, sir, we do. Life-saving training.
I would like to see, I don't know if this is possible, I'd like to see them partner with the municipal court. I know you have sentenced people to picking up trash and other community service. I'd like to see CPR and life-saving skills as one of those community service type things, because, I'm just being honest with y'all, it's a lot of trauma in my neighborhood. You know, people get stabbed, people get shot. I'd like to have people around that know how to do those things.
That would be wonderful, and we teach that here. We teach it in our office over on Dallas Street. We can also come to you and teach those classes, so I think that would be really wonderful if you'd be interested.
We'll ask, we'll ask the city manager to communicate to the, to the court, the possibility of exploring a partnership there.
I'd definitely like to see that.
Yeah. That's great. Great suggestion. Okay, thank you, Holly.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you, appreciate you being here. And I'm also delighted to welcome, as a delegation, Phil Nations, who recently announced his entry into the political world, announced his candidacy for Troop County Board of Commissions Chairman. Glad to have you, Phil.
Thank y'all very much. I know most of y'all, and in fact, I grew up with some of y'all here. Tommy and I, we played, we played Little League baseball together. Basically, I've been retired for the last couple of years, and just want to give back to the community, and I feel like this is gonna be an opportunity for me to give back, because I've, I've got a lot of knowledge and a lot of traits that I've gathered through the years with all the different experiences I've had in, in different categories and in the work fields. As far as myself, I started in my first business in 1975. As far as myself, I started in my first business in 1975, opened a little service station out at Lees Cross. I was 19-years, no, I was 20-years-old, I'm sorry, 20-years-old. And believe it or not, I pretty much spent everything I had opening that little station up and found out it wasn't really what I needed to do. I was too young, I didn't have enough money to back me. But I learned a lot from that experience, as far as, from there on. And I went to work for Skinner Corporation. If y'all familiar with Skinner Furniture, they had 32 stores. And I was, I worked for them 13 and a half years, and basically they put me in a position, I was the youngest manager at 22, put me in a position of opening up new stores. I opened up stores in Georgia and Alabama. And then when I left Skinner's after that 13 and a half years, I went to work for Rhodes, and they did the same thing. I was opening furniture stores in Georgia, Alabama, and North Carolina. Then I decided, well, I need to go and business for myself. I don't know how many of y'all remember the pink sofa uptown, but that would be me. Well, I opened up that store, and it was a tragic, bad opportunity. Lost a lot of money in that deal when that thing burned. It was a sad situation. But we continued on, we fought through that. But we opened up, actually we opened two more for furniture stores, we opened three more manager stores at that time. And then in 2000, I decided I was wanting to get in the towing business, and that was pretty smart. But anyway, it was, it's been very good. We did, got into it and got into the heavy-duty, big truck tire business and the heavy-duty towing. And we did that all the way up until about two years ago, no, about 2019, I got out of it, turned it over to the Suns, and let them, they're working on it now, and they actually found another location, they're fixing to move into that. So I need something to do, so I said, well, I know what I can do. I could, I know how to merchandise, I know how to sell, I know how to find different things at better prices and shop around. So I feel like the county can need a little help here and there, so I'm gonna throw it in and see what I can do, because I feel like I can give back to the community. And I can find some voids that can be filled by myself. I'm not taking away from anybody that's doing their jobs now. Basically, all I want to do is just plug in some different holes there. So that's what I'm all about. I'm here for the community and give back to the community and help. It's any, any position. I do see some places that, and in fact, I've talked to a few people, local, that feel like there's some places that need some money spent in some local communities, places like the Greg Center over there. There might be some things that get done over there or whatever. But you hear all kinds of stuff, and you know, you can't do everything, it's impossible. But you do have the opportunity to try to figure out what you can do for the people. We need to bring in some businesses here for people to shop at, and they don't have a good shopping place here anymore. You know, as far as all the little stuff, like Solomon's, they still there. Mansour's is gone. The mall don't have that many anymore. People here talk about, well, we gotta go out of town to shop, buy anything. Got plenty of places to eat now, plenty of that around here. So basically, I'm just here for, just to tell y'all who I am, what I'm for. And like I say, I won't ask anybody to do anything I won't do or hadn't done before or won't do again. And I appreciate y'all's support. Thank y'all very much.
Well, Phil, thank you for coming. Thank you for sharing your, a little bit of your story. I had forgot, I remember the pink sofa, but I had forgotten about your connection to it. So I appreciate you sharing that and learning a little bit about your background. I've known you in the towing business, didn't, didn't know about your career in furniture before that, so.
Actually, I worked for Tom's Limb, Tom's Foods, Peanuts also. I was a merchandise guy for them in high school.
But obviously, all of us, this dius have, you know, been in your position of running a campaign and doing that, and so we, we know what that's like, and we wish you all the best in that process. And I guess in this case, you have the blessing of it being a short campaign cycle, relatively short, relatively short.
Yeah.
And so, and if you're successful in that, we look forward to working with you, because it's important to have good city-county relationship. That's a critical, critical relationship.
That's exactly what it's all about for me, is working with everybody. And I'm not trying to do anything to work against anybody, we're trying to make a better community.
Sure.
And that's what it's all about.
Any questions or comments for Mr. Nations?
Good luck. Appreciate you coming in.
Thank you, sir.
Okay. Thank you, thank you for being here, Phil. Okay. We will move on to petitions and communications. I have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on UDO text amendments regarding minimum distance requirements.
Mr. Costel, get this report, Mayor.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members. During a council meeting held on February the 22nd of this year, council requested that proposed text amendments be created and presented to the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals related to the property line-to-property line method, method of measurement captured in Section 25B 30-1 of the UDO, and in the alternative, a reduction to the minimum distance requirement between limited uses as captured in 25B 30-9. A call meeting was held yesterday, at which time the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals unanimously, unanimously, pardon me, recommended to deny these proposed text amendments. The action item for this evening is to determine whether or not to proceed with these proposed texts, text amendments in light of the planning board's recommendation. If it's your pleasure to do so, a public hearing can be scheduled for Tuesday, April the 12th. If you elect not to proceed, then no action is required.
Is, just to clarify for the record, when you say no actions required, we don't need to take a motion to not proceed?
It might be helpful just for the sake of the minutes, if you...
Okay. So, so we would either have, so, so it would, in order, it would be in order to make a motion to call for public hearing and first reading on April the 12th, or alternatively, it would be in order for a motion to not proceed with the text amendments?
That's right.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion not to proceed.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion a second not to proceed with the text amendments. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion not to proceed, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. Okay, that passes unanimously. Okay, thank you, Mr. Costel. Don't go too far. I also have a Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals recommendation on UDO text amendment regarding industrial parking ratio requirements, and I'll look to the city manager, who I'm thinking is going to look to you, so.
That is exactly right, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. During a meeting held on March the 21st, the Board of Planning and Zoning Appeals unanimously recommended the approval of a proposed text amendment to Section 25B 35-2 of our UDO as it specifically relates to minimum parking requirements for industrial and agricultural uses. If it's your pleasure to do so, the action item for this evening is to call for a public hearing to be held on April the 12th.
No public hearing.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, or several thereof, to, to have a public hearing on April the 12th, and we'd have first reading as well. Any, any discussion? All in favor of moving forward with that text amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Costel. Okay, we will move to reports. Do any council members have anything they would like to report tonight?
No report.
I got a report. Everything is not good in the hood. It's too much violence, it's too many guns. I need people to really take heed to the safety and well-being of others. I'm just tired of people shooting one another over bull. I'm just tired of it. People can't even have an argument anymore without it ending in somebody being killed. There's got to be a better way. We've got to love ourselves. We've got to love one another. So my report today is, we need more love in La Grange. When you see somebody, don't say hello or say goodbye, tell them that you love them. I don't care if it's a complete stranger. Tell them that you love them. We need more love in this, in this community, right here, right now. I'm not a preacher, I'm not a pastor. I just do the best I can with what I got. But I know we need more love. That's my report. Thank you.
Well, thank you, Councilman Gaskin. We know you, you do your part, and we appreciate what you do, and certainly it's good, good words for all of us. Ms. Kelsey, do you have anything to report as the city manager?
I do not, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. I will move to resolutions, and I have a resolution terminating the City of La Grange Tax Allocation District Number One Commercial Gateway.
Yes, sir. The redevelopment agency met this afternoon, as you know, that is comprised of the Board of Education, Troup County, Mayor, Council of the City of La Grange. They reviewed the status of our active tax allocation districts, and we have five of those. That board recommended termination of Commercial Gateway, which is what we call TAD Number One. That was formed in 2012, and at this time, there is no development on that property.
Motion terminate?
To terminate.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution terminating TAD Number One. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. We also have a resolution terminating the City of La Grange Tax Allocation District Number Three, Veterans Village.
Yes, sir. The status on this is that it was formed in 2012. To date, there is no development on this property. The board did recommend to terminate this TAD. This is located on Hamilton Road, the old American Legion property.
Motion terminate?
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the resolution terminating TAD Number Three. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Okay. I will move to first reading of ordinances, and we have an ordinance rezoning property located at 304 Broad Street from TNMX to DTMX.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of La Grange to amend the code of the city to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use zone of real estate located on Broad Street and owned by M.K. Property Management Group, and repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
I also have a first reading rezoning property located in the 800 block of New Franklin Road from TNR and SDMH to CRMX.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of La Grange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to reclassify the use zone of real estate located on New Franklin Road and owned by MK Property Management Group, and repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And then I have a first reading of an ordinance annexing property located at 1350 Lafayette Parkway.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of La Grange to annex to the city contiguous real property owned by B's Meat Market LLC and located on Lafayette Parkway to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And finally, I have a first reading zone, reading of an ordinance zoning property located at 1350 Lafayette Parkway from Troup County GC to CRMX.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of La Grange to amend the zoning map and ordinances of the city so as to classify the use zone of real estate to be annexed into the city located on Lafayette Parkway and owned by B's Meat Market LLC, to repeal conflicting ordinances to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
And then under second reading of ordinances, I have an ordinance modifying the speed limits on certain city streets.
An ordinance of the mayor and council of the City of La Grange to modify the lawful speed limits on certain city streets to conform to DOT recommendations, to repeal conflicting ordinances, to fix an effective date and for other purposes.
Motion approved.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the ordinance. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, no. That passes unanimously. Ms. Van Schor, would you like to close us?
Yes, sir. Our good news for tonight is that we're excited to start promoting our citywide Leaving La Grange Better Than We Found It litter cleanup. That's going to be on Friday, April 22nd, 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. That's where we shut down the city. Our hundreds of city employees will pick up litter throughout the community, and we are inviting the community to join us as always. This year, we're showcasing our new litter picker machinery that picks up litter 10 times faster than city staff alone. And we're also asking our community to let us know about local dump sites. So we also want to show a video to y'all that we're going to release tomorrow promoting our event.
The City of La Grange is holding its annual citywide cleanup event on April 22nd from 8:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. Each year, the city closes non-essential business for a day while hundreds of employees pick